All right, good evening. I'm going to call this meeting order at 6 o'clock PM. Before we do board reorganization, I do want to welcome Cheryl McDonough. She took her oath of office right before this meeting, so she is officially on board. Thank you, Cheryl, for joining us.
You're very welcome. It's nice to be back.
And as one comes in, one leaves. So Allison, thanks for being here tonight.
Oh, Allison, thank you.
Of course.
I didn't know you, but thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Just a few things for you, Allison, as a token of our appreciation, because I know that it's going to hang right in your kitchen.
It is. You watch. I mean, when you sign up to be on the school board, you go, yeah, I can go to one meeting a month.
And you know, it's so much fun.
Yeah. Really appreciate it. You've done for our school and advocating for us. Oh, you do so much. It's great.
It's just one, it's just one meeting a month, right, Cheryl?
Yeah. Everyone loves to do that, tell them.
Well, it only took us three years to get this through, this addition.
Yes.
So Allison, thank you very much. I totally thank you for all that you did over the last three years. We really appreciate it. So thank you so much. The first order of business is that I would like to take any nominations for Kensington Board Chair.
Are we allowed to discuss first?
You, I think you two need to discuss. I don't know anybody. I'm going to vote for Molly, for God's sake.
Okay, good. All right, I nominate Josh.
I second.
Any discussion?
Josh, you're a good man.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, will order call? How do you vote? Yes or no, Cheryl?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Josh, do you accept?
Sure.
Perfect, thank you very much. All right, Josh, I'm going to turn it over to you. And your first order of business will be to get an assistant chair to help you out in case you can't make a meeting.
Okay. So in terms of assistant chair, you want to talk that through?
Excellent.
So I'll make a motion to have Stephanie Schmidt be the vice chair. Anybody second?
Second.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, the agenda is yours, Josh.
Okay. So should I call out the non-public session?
Yeah, we don't have anything for non-public tonight. If something does come up, we can go back to it, for sure.
Okay. All right, so I think that brings us up to public input. Al, did you want to talk through what you had sent over previously?
I had a wonderful two-hour session with principal. And she didn't put me in the corner, so I guess I did okay.
Thanks.
And what I'm proposing is to, and it's be your report. In my discussion with the principal, what I wanted to do was learn more about how SAU 16 works at this level, right? And to try to tackle it at another level is really not in my ball of wax right now is. Would I, going to the SAU board meetings in Exeter, the last one, there was a push amongst the smaller towns to have some type of representation because they felt that they weren't being heard. And one of the issues that was in the discussion is obviously there was a place to try to kind of bend the curve on the budget, not take away people's programs or do anything like that, but to kind of bend the curve on the budget. And living in Kensington for 35 years here now, you know, we've had a lot of changes and we've all been supporters of the school. We want to continue to do that. It's, it's, my discussion with the principal is to try to get the community on board to find ways that we might be able to save money or have some synergies with some of the other schools and bring things together. I don't know, you know, technically or legally, you know, what it can or cannot be done, but I thought that had, you know, maybe the board could consider an ad hoc committee, bring some people together, talk about some ideas ahead of the curve and, and, you know, just have that discussion amongst the community. Because as you know, people's taxes are becoming excessive for most people. And right now, it's about $28,000 to educate a student in SAU 16, including us. And the costs are, you know, not scheduled to go down, but up. So I thought it would be great for the community, great for us, if we started that at a, at an ad hoc committee level and appoint people and, and just have a discussion and find and report back to the board what we found or what we think could be helpful, you know, with the help of the, learning more from the principal and everybody else. But it's more of a community effort and just an ad hoc committee, basically, to try to identify some chips, you know, some things we can do.
I think it sounds great, Al. And I reviewed the letter that you sent over and some of the information to show the increases over the past 20 years or so. I found that information pretty, pretty eye-opening when you look at the trend.
Yeah.
I will say that there is a policy that we do have to look at and abide by when it comes to forming committees. So that is something that I think we should look through together, make sure that we can meet those needs. And then, to me, it sounds like if we can meet the needs of what that policy is asking for, you know, I definitely think that this would be a great thing that, or a great exercise that we could go through and then hear about and learn more about what can be done in the future to potentially lower that cost. Or at least be mindful of what the key drivers are and, you know, what's been pushing this cost up over the past few years.
And it could be as simple sometimes as, you know, buying oil for this school. You know, buying it with three other towns might be able to lower just the cost of just eating. You know, I know we have a high heating bill. I'm just some things like that that we, you know, you guys are doing every day. But, you know, you could, you know, have the community and there's smart people. There's, you know, there's accountants, there's people like that that can, you know, suggest some ideas. And then, like I said, bring it to the board. And it's, you know, just strictly for you. And what you choose to do with it from there is, is what you choose to do.
I have a question. Al, in the way that you're thinking about the design of this committee or this ad hoc committee, are you thinking, obviously, giving input towards the budget and how the budget is formed or given the rationale? Are you thinking that this would be, in similar towns, they have budget advisory committees and some that are municipalities where they're selected, but they do look at the budget two or three times before it actually goes out to the public meeting? Are you thinking something like that? Or are you thinking something that's studying for a longer duration of time? I think that, that needs to be kind of flushed out a little bit so that it can be known.
That's a, it's a good point. And I don't have any sense to that. And like I said, because I did a little investigation on how the budgeting works at the next level, not this level, but the next level. And that's a whole nother thing. What I thought that we could look at ourselves in Kensington, East Kingston, Kingston, Hampton Falls, some of the smaller towns and say, what do we have? What is there something that we might be able to do together collectively? Now, I know Hampton Falls may not be SAU 16. But, but my idea was to kind of look at things and say, we all have the same problems. We have a dropping number of students into buildings that are built for more, right? I mean, and unfortunately, that number doesn't look like it's, it's going to be climbing anytime soon with the cost of, of taxes, et cetera. People moving here or moving out are older people moving in or out, not usually people with kids at this, unfortunately, we priced ourselves out. So I see the trend and the numbers going this way for the number of students. And then that means that per student cost goes up because we still have to feed the infrastructure, right? So my goal is to, you know, get people together, work with the board. What would you like us to look at? You know, I'm just starting to get the ball rolling. I don't have the answers. It's just something, I think, being proactive in the community and they say, hey, we're trying to do something, does better for the school board and the school itself when they know they're trying to, you know, find, and, you know, questions. We don't even know what they are yet until we compare. But maybe Kingston and East Kingston has similar things that we could look at that we might be able to have some synergies and save money.
Is there, to your knowledge, other, other councilor, remember the other person who showed up?
Yeah, oh, no, I just.
To meetings with this concern this year? Or do you know of other people that would want to serve the committee?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah. Kensington people, absolutely. What we don't want, I mean, not I don't want, but we need to have a really good mix of young people with families so that an old person, like me, an older person that's, you know, retired. But I think a nice mix and bringing people together that's across, you know, someone who has a student here. You know, I think that's going to be important, the makeup of it. And it's, it's to try to bring people together from different perspectives because, you know, you don't want, you know, a whole bunch of retired people looking at something. We don't have a child in the school system, so we, we miss something that, that they would get.
And I think there's still a certain amount of education that has to be done. I can't tell you how many people I talked to yesterday who don't understand the difference between the co-op budget and this budget. And I said, I can't talk to you about that because I don't get a vote there. And they're like, what do you mean? I said, I just don't. That's your co-op rep. So I was kind enough to roll Bob Hall under the bus. And I'm sure he's going to thank me for that. But we need to educate that part, too.
And the other part is that, you know, as I learned earlier, that 80% of the budget is really not touchable to us, right? We're only playing with, not playing, we have, we're responsible for 15%. So, I mean, that's, you know, if we can make some synergies or look at things into the future, are we going to have more students? Maybe three schools or one school? I don't know. But I'm, it's something to think about. If we start thinking about it, at least we'll be ahead of it.
Yeah, but to me, Al, like the year-over-year change in the budget seems a little bit easier to dig into. And we have a lot of the data to support that. But what I see you sending over is the cost per student. And when you look at the graphs and the charts that you included, there's huge changes over the past 23 years, 150% in some cases. And to me, if we look at the overall trend and where things are headed in terms of increases, I feel like it would be a great, a great body of work to focus in on what is pushing those costs so high. Where are the drivers? Because that would make the budgeting process year-over-year more transparent and would clearly pull out some of the key drivers behind why these graphs are showing such big increases.
And those are from the Department of Education, that's not mine. And, you know, we, we ended up, New Hampshire is the ninth highest state in the country for, for, for paying for a student-per-student cost. You may, you know, one of the challenges now is in the Supreme Court, or will be maybe in the Supreme Court, is the case that, you know, will, will the state fund more of an individual or on an individual basis? The challenge there is that it hasn't gone to the Supreme Court yet. There's going to be a battle there. And I think even after, regardless of how that goes, there's no guarantee that a person's taxes are going to be lowered. And that's a misconception. And what happens is people are being kind of, not sold that, I don't mean to say that, but people are kind of being led to say, hey, we just make the state pay more money than we'll pay less. That's not necessarily the true, right? So my thought is before, it would be much better for the people of Kensington if we said, look, we have these issues, we're going to look at them. We don't know where it's going to go, but we want a cross-section of the community. And, you know, you know, our report would go to you. It's not going to anybody else.
Yeah, exactly. And showing why the increases have been as high as they have over the past 20 years would be a great starting point. And then it's moving into what we can do to solve for it. And like you said, maybe partnering with other towns to bulk buy utilities. Sure, that could be a solution. But for me, I can look at this data right now. I don't know exactly how we got there. So shining a light on exactly, or the key drivers behind it would be very helpful. And I think that would be something that the public would want to know as well.
And, you know, as we're fortunate in Kensington in a way, if you're a parent here because you have 15 students per class, right? That's great. Any parent would love that. But, you know, where is that? Will it go to 13? Will it go to 12? And, you know, we will look at this, we were looking at, the principal and I were looking at, you know, where is the dynamic going for more kids coming? I don't, I don't really see that with the cost of our real estate. I just don't see that. So I may be wrong, but the numbers don't indicate that historically.
So, Chris, I can't pull the policy up in front of you right now, but.
Can you give a copy of the policy that we're all looking at?
So, Chris, based on my read of this, I think the first thing to do is to figure out what we want to form for our committee. And then, I guess, kind of playing this out, if we spend, or if Al, you spent time from this point until the next meeting, gathering people that might work for a committee, we could then agree or vote on that committee in the upcoming meeting?
Yeah, so there's, there's seven specific questions that this policy asks the board to kind of put out there. So that would be my recommendation is that the board reviews the policy, be ready to come in to make a recommendation of what you want and how you want to gather input from, from townspeople or different stakeholders to be part of that committee. So if it is truly a budget advisory committee, what's the task you're giving them? Are you giving them to look at the budget and give recommendations before it goes to the next deliberative session? Are you asking them to study, you know, cost sharing with other districts? You know, so I think that's, that's part of what the board has to think about. So that would be my recommendation is that when we come in April, we have kind of an idea of what you'd like to put forward as an advisory committee and if that's the approach that you want to go through.
And then it would be determined who consists the committee?
Okay.
Or makes up the.
Because the board would, would appoint community members as part of this policy that seemed appropriate. So is it three? Is it five? You know, in other districts this size, we usually have three members on a budget advisory committee. And that's what they do. They look at cost comparisons, give recommendations. Again, they're advisory committees, so they're advising the board of what to do with the budget.
Considering we just passed the budget, right? If I'm, if I'm hearing or reading the request the right way, it seems to me like it's less of a budget advisor committee and more of a forward-looking research into how we got where we are and then what we can do to solve for it going forward, that we can then embed within the next budget process.
So we would make a recommendation to the board and say, this is what we found. Here's some places where we think we can really make a difference. And it's something that you should want to take a look at. And at least the next budget time comes, you have some ammunition to look at things in a different way.
Like a cost-saving investigation.
Okay. All right, so we can take that back and detail it out before the next meeting.
And then you have to decide who you'd like from the school, if you want someone from central office, if there's going to be a board member part of that committee working with them as well, what that looks like.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
Do you want to just do my input now on the committee on safety and security?
Yeah, sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, you can do that.
I just wanted to be able to give that to you all before, because I was the one that attended that meeting on February 22nd. It was a shorter meeting, which just really updates on everything that that committee is a part of. They did talk about, you know, some of the great things that SAU 16 is really doing as far as reunification drills. They're really looking at kind of working with some of their area towns and districts to, you know, look at, do we have sites that are a little bit further away? If we have to set up reunification sites, if there isn't a school in SAU 16 and vice versa for those other districts that are over that we would work with. And so they're looking at kind of setting up these wider areas that we would all work together as districts to create these sites. They talked a lot about kind of funding and getting radios and updates on those creative efforts and that sort of stuff. As usual, they talked about that homeless carry audit, which we saw ours from Becky. I reviewed that at a meeting and there's a couple other schools that are doing that. They talked about the great work that the unit teams doing. Anything else that you're thinking about? It was a quieter meeting.
Looking at the agenda, I would jog my memory.
I know, yeah. It was definitely a quieter meeting. It wasn't as, as long as the last one, so. We need bus drivers. That was the big three at the end. We are definitely hurting for bus drivers in the district, so transportation is.
I think the only reason why they want the doors as a, if something is happening in SAU 16, there's probably a lot of trauma and people kind of freezing. So it's better to have someone else who's removed that can think, like, think about what needs to be done. Because if something happens here, we probably have a lot of friends or, especially at the high school. Even here, we're super connected to the high school. So we not, might not have the capacity to do what we need to do.
Yeah. And, yeah, I mean, I think the takeaway from that meeting often is with these meetings is that SAU 16 is really doing a really, it's doing a really good job statewide as far as representing safety and security and kind of leading in a lot of ways in that area. And then community news, I have done it. Nothing like waiting till the last minute. I'm having Steph edit it for me. But, and then if, when she says it's a go, I'll send it over and for the next one. I think, I think the deadline, it might even be Sunday for the next one. So I can't remember, I saw it, but. But I don't care, I'm going to send it over anyways for the next community.
Really, really.
Yeah, I was like, I am going to do this. I said I would, so.
All right, thanks, Allison. Appreciate it. So let's bounce back up for a second. Approval, meeting minutes, February 7th, 2024. I didn't have any edits.
I always have something. Under, actually, under seven, under principal's report, there's just a couple of things that I think are just unclear. The reported under community culture, the cultural passport tradition. I just think the wording of the program just didn't get captured, maybe. It didn't read smoothly to me that you think it's the cultural passport rather than tradition. And then the next paragraph, I think probably best just to end the sentence after winter words because the next part was about something entirely different, not connected to ASL. So maybe just end the sentence at winter words.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended from February 7th. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor? All right, so jumping back down to committee reports, there was no policy committee after our last meeting. Took a short break. There is a meeting scheduled for next Thursday. Safety and security, we just talked about superintendent and evaluation committee.
So we're meeting tomorrow to finalize the 360 evaluation protocol, the survey and everything with Dr. Aspel. And, and then that will sort of start happening, the evaluation. There's a, we'll finalize the timeline for all that. But it's all in motion. It's all happening. Yeah, I think this is a, she's going to approve, approve number. So that's, that was that.
Okay. And then Kensington School Study, what do you have?
That's still unhated.
Okay. Any general correspondence? Communications and Community Engagement Committee?
Yep, we met in our class, not a week ago, a couple weeks ago. So, so we came back, then we're over, that's the new responses, which was statistically enough for them to infer the wider evaluation. So, yeah, we have different responses. Esther's going to present the results at the next co-op, the next meeting in April. But I think I'll just leave it for her to, to share those results. And the, they are going to be used in the strategic planning. So there's sort of a, a longer goal besides just kind of reading the picture at the moment. So, yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of common responses, so that was good. And yeah, she will have a part in that.
Thank you. And then the community news submission just talked about. In terms of committees, should we talk about new committees?
Yeah. Do you want to reassign any places or if you're feeling comfortable and where would Cheryl like to jump on?
And I'm really okay if you get enough places to fit.
Both fresh places. That's for sure. Don't worry about that. So in terms of.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. In terms of the lineup here, I've been responsible for the policy committee for the past 50 years. And I think Allison was on safety and security. And Steph, you have superintendent, school study, and then communications.
Yeah, communications is wrapped, so that one, that one we need to, we don't need to.
Community news is kind of ad hoc, so I think we can all kind of handle that one together as we go forward.
So I think, yeah, the safety and security, the only thing about it is it needs to end at 10:00, right? Isn't that kind of?
Yeah, we usually meet at 9:00, three times a year.
Well, I'm retired, I get up at 1:00. The problem, no, the only problem with that being is I do travel forward, so, so sometimes I wouldn't be there. You're still doing policy?
I'm still doing policy.
Do you want to take off? You want, you know, get a break?
It's up to you.
I'm good with policy because I'm a lawyer and I can write anywhere. And I can write anywhere. But no, I would, I would work with you, whatever you guys want me to. Now that you're chair, you're going to have different things to do because you're going to be on the chairs. I mean, there's other stuff you're going to have to do, but I'll do whatever you want me to.
Okay.
Like until I don't want to.
I'm happy to.
Molly knows me.
I'm happy to have you take my seat on the policy.
Okay, who else is on the policy?
Just me.
Then I'll get along really well.
One member, I meet four, Cheryl. Yeah. They meet once a month and it's usually the.
Is it at, is it at my house they meet once a month?
Well, you know what? So for the first year, it was all in person. And then it shifted to more of a half-in, half-out type mode, which is where we've been sitting now for the past year or so. So there are certain, there are certain people that go into the administrative office. And then Heather, who's the one that runs the, the meetings or essentially serves as the lead in the meetings, she has a Zoom setup. So if you want to zoom in from morning.
All right, so even, or even if I was on the road, I could zoom?
Yeah.
Because I do still travel, okay.
It's 6:00 to 7:30 once a month.
Oh, so you mean at night, right?
Yes.
Just checking.
No, no breakfast in policy.
There's a reason I left working in public schools. All right, good.
So.
Yeah, I can do that if you want me to, but if you want me somewhere else, I'm happy to do that.
I think security would be hard for you to do, right?
Yeah.
Day-to-day meeting, yeah.
Yeah, work-wise.
Oh, then I'll do safety. No, I'll do, because you're really working. I'm just kind of working because I don't want to stay home all the time. I'll do safety, you do policy. Okay, that's it. I'll do safety, I got it.
Okay.
Plus, I have grandchildren and I don't let them out of a bubble. So I will be really safe for these kids. Like, they will not leave anywhere. All right, so put me on safety.
And I can say what I'm doing. Yeah. And we can, we can channel it if it's.
Yeah, and if you need a sub, call me, I'll sub in on policy.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think it's important to.
I'll do safety though, because no, my kids are telling me I never let them do anything. My 41-year-old can't ride his bike yet.
Well, that makes it pretty easy then. All right, so we move to business and financials. Pam?
Do you guys read the report, get my notes? Do you want me to read through them? Do you just have questions? How do you want to do it?
So I was, my take here, I'm kind of homing in on the recommendations and the lack of oversight, or it seems like there's room for improvement in terms of oversight. And I remember we talked about that a little bit last year, too. So maybe if we could talk about some of the, the two recommendations that you listed and then have a group discussion on how you think we can address those. To me, that feels like.
Maybe a quick overview of your district.
I was going to say, should you get a chance to redo it?
My thoughts are telling us what we've already done to change.
So I'll just, it's not long. So my audit findings were side reconciliations to the TD Bank and Worth operating checking account for the months of May, June, and July have not been located as of the date of the audit, which was in January.
You can look.
The reconciliations that were provided have the signatures of the treasurer, but it's not dated at the time when the treasurer signs them. Sometimes the recons are printed with the date. But again, that doesn't mean that he signed it on that date. He could have sat there for three weeks before he went to sign it. I think that you're supposed to try to get them signed within a, a month of the close of the date of the, the prior month. So, and then as of the end of the year reconciliation, there was an $800 deposit in transit dated May 4th, 2023. In general, deposits in transit should take several days to a maximum of a week if there's holidays or issues at the bank, but over a month is not really reasonable. I knew about the outstanding amount going into the audit as the admin. I knew about the outstanding amount going into the audit as the admin here had let me know because the money was erroneously deposited into the student activity account. Um, and she was concerned that it was in her account and didn't belong there and it was making her books off. Um, so she had emailed a few times pointing it out and asking what to do with it, never heard back. So then she sent, she just sent in a check and mailed the $800 back to the SAU to clear it out of her account. And then the big one was for the new TD Bank North operating account. ADS uses a reconciliation. They use like the system generated reconciliation for the account, which is great. But at the year end, it said for June 30th, they had an $86,671 outstanding deposit from the state of New Hampshire adequate aid. It was still considered in transit and as of January 5th of this year, I had sent several requests prior to Christmas looking for it, didn't get back. Finally, I reached out to Molly. So then she dug into it and that she found that the support and sent it to me. The check was actually dated December 20th, 2022. It was deposited per ADP ADS on 1/5/2023. And then the bank statement shows the same amount being withdrawn from the account on 1/23/23, noting that it was a nonconforming image and that the funds were coming back out. So they deposited it, the bank rejected it and showed the money being taken back out on the 23rd of just of January 2023.
Pam, just one, just sorry to interrupt, but what does a nonconforming image mean? Like why would?
They do like a digital upload. So I didn't get the detail on that. Maybe Molly has more detail. But I'm assuming like they took the picture of the check and it didn't scan correctly or.
The bank didn't like it.
Yeah. Um, so the money came back out. It was on the bank statement that that money had come back out. It was clearly something wrong with that deposit. I pointed it out when I started doing the audit. They reached Molly when I finally got her involved. She reached out. She got it deposited on the 10th of January 2024. So that's not great. It's a large sum of money. The interest rate, they were yielding about 2.9%. So that's like $2,200 we could have earned on that money had it been in the bank account for that amount of time. So for my recommendation, it was, you know, I don't think there's any issue of like fraud or anyone trying to do anything illegal or shady or anything like that. I think it's more of just no one followed up on it. Either Kensington's so small that it's not important to the person managing the books or they, I really don't know at this point. Because I thought like having a finding with the prior year like this year would be nice and buttoned up. And then I found an even bigger issue this year. So I really don't know what to say there. But I do know like prior to the last two years, there was never an issue. Everything was all buttoned up. So it's it's not impossible. So I think maybe they need to do, I think last year you guys were gonna have like the two accountants review each other's work or something. Is that what you?
I have to look back to see. I don't remember the two accountants reviewing each other's work. But so in relation to the items there, so the first one is the bank reconciliations of the signatures. So in the SAU office, in our office, all the treasurers and the cooperative board members all come in to sign. So every time I bring our manifest, we collect all the manifests in our office and we we have a shelf with each of the district's names on it. And then on the table is the SAU. And so the treasurer, when he comes to sign, he signs for three different districts, the SAU, the cooperative and Kensington. So there's a lot of papers, a lot of papers going everywhere. Um, and so what I've asked the accountant to do is scan all bank reconciliations after he signs them. So that way we have them on the shared drive. So they can't go missing because there's just a lot of paper on that desk with the same treasurer for three districts. And if he misplaced it in the cooperative pile, I'm never gonna find it. And so I've asked the accountant to scan all bank reconciliations after they happen. So we have that that file. The second item had to do with, it was actually a parent paying tuition. And it went into the student activity account. And if I remember correctly, at the time we had one check remaining for the citizens account. And we, because we were transitioning it over to TD, so it took some time and we did rectify that. On the $86,000 one, yes, we deposited it, got rejected by the bank. And when the accountant was doing the reconciliations subsequent to that, I should start by, the state aid is auto deposited for all districts. Why the state sent a physical check for Kensington, I'm not sure.
I'm gonna assume because the bank changed.
They might have, yeah. And so.
So that $86,000 represents state aid. So that's where the $86,000 is coming from.
So typically state aid is always a direct deposit to our account. We would not typically get a physical check. So Pam's right. It was right after the bank changed. So they probably sent us the physical check. It got, we deposited it, it got rejected by the bank. And so when the accountant was doing her reconciliation subsequent to that, she was comparing two records that didn't have the 86K in it. So her records matched. So when her records matched, she didn't think to go one step further. And so what I've done is set in the process to look more in depth of the bank reconciliations and reconciled items so that that she'll see that. And she's also filled out the direct deposit form so that it's just drafted or deposited into our account. It's not gonna be a physical check.
So that that lack of a reconciliating would still persist month over month?
So the the two documents that she was comparing to do her reconciliation, neither one had the $86,000 in it. So when she compared it, they matched.
How would they not have it in it though? I guess that's sort of having a hard time following.
Like you would think that it would show the in and the out.
Yeah, like is it because of the new bank account? Or like might that be it?
It was because of the reports that she was comparing and used the ADS function that she was using to do the reconciliation. So we had her go back to the old way of doing it, not the way that was in the ADS system.
She's not using ADS?
Well, she's doing it both ways. It's a double check.
So they didn't know they had a check. So.
Yeah. So the two reports she was comparing.
Well, I mean, so I found it just by looking at the ADS reconciliation and looking at the deposits in transit. And it stuck out like a sore thumb. So I mean, you know, I'm I'm an accountant. So my part of my job is I review my staff's reconciliations every single month. And I need to review them within the 30 days of the close and sign off. And that's one of our audit requirements. So I feel like that whole step is missing at the SAU. Because if anyone were reviewing those on a monthly basis, that would have been caught right away.
Well, that's what I like. I could see maybe a month or or two. But if we're going like a full year and we're going even over the close of the year. I don't know. It seems like maybe the not the right documents are being brought into the reconciliation process to catch any outliers.
And that's exactly why we changed our reconciliation process. So what happens at the SAU is the account prepares it and the treasurer reviews it. So I wouldn't typically review it, but I did start reviewing these to ensure that.
But I question like, does, is he really reviewing it or is he just signing things? You just said like when he comes in to sign, it's like a mess of papers and we're signing all these different things for all these different things. And like, is he spending like a good hour there looking through it all? Or is he just chucking a signature on and then leaving? Because I feel like he's just signing things.
If if would it make sense, Molly, like is there some sort of additional review? Like you just mentioned the fact that you were looking at them. Like, does it make sense to maybe implement something like that moving forward? So there's more of a detailed double check involved?
Yeah. Yeah. And we have, we have been doing that since this, because the the two reports she was using, she didn't see it. And she wasn't following up on the H items. And so now we have a process for her to do that.
And and might that help the other side of it where we're talking about having a signature in terms of reconciliation? Like, could we maybe add that layer of formalization to the process? Then it makes it all more, all the more likely that we don't see something like this happen in the future?
Our, the bank recons have the same like signature like your manifest have, not school board, but it's for the treasurer. And so we could easily add another signature on there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who Eric or forced, but like Michelle.
Would she be able to review it or?
Either Michelle or.
No other questions?
Well, thanks, Pam. Appreciate it.
I'm going to email this to the state. Do you want me to CC all of you or just you or?
Um, female, me and Josh is the chair.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be great.
Yeah, because I have to upload to the.
Okay, so I'll copy the three of you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So included in your board pack is the the financial as well. Allison, um, in the, up there in the panel between Josh and Cheryl is the manifest. And then the very first thing is the MS 22. I'll have to get all three of your signatures. So what the MS 22 is, it takes the results from last night and sits them all together for your new budget. So, um, for article number one is the budget, uh, two, three, and four of the trust. So it adds that all to be the one appropriation. So it's the same thing as the MS 26 that you signed a few weeks ago before we posted. This is just the actual. Um, and then the manifest there. So Cheryl, just I'm sure, I don't know if you did this in your last meeting on the board, but anytime there's a payroll run or an accounts payable run, we bring the manifest to you to sign in the school board meeting. We typically send an email. I don't know if Allison was getting the emails or did one of you guys get the emails? Maybe Allison was. So every time we do it, because finding, actually, it wasn't a finding here. It was a finding in other districts that used positive standards from the accounting firm. Was that these manifests are coming to after the payments that sent out the door. So we had been sending one board member as kind of like a pre-review firm, dotted for recommendation. So now that we have a new board member, I don't know. Looking to receive the emails? Did you get them? Did Allison get them? Allison might have.
I think we gave it to chair. Chair was responsible.
Okay, so then Allison was doing it. Okay.
Yeah.
Are you happy to do it? Okay. So I will have them review it then too. So typically what they do is to send you the accounts payable because the payroll is pretty standard. The accounts payable manifest after they're run and then you can respond saying that you approve and then you accept.
Okay. So in theory, is it very similar to what we're doing here, but more of an electronic signature?
Yes. So here it's after the payments have been made. So if we make a payment at the beginning of the month and we don't meet till the end of the month, what we do is we process typically on a Wednesday and then we drop the checks in the mail by Friday. So if we send out a manifest, it's more of a cursory review. So you use a, hey, Molly, don't drop that check in the mail and don't agree with it type of thing. And so I'll have to send it to you.
Okay.
The other thing is, is since the last board meeting, we did add $117,000 in expense. The majority of it was regarding rooftop unit and the boiler. We did have some changes in student need related to special education. And then there was a little bit of summer school money that wasn't able to be covered by the grant that we had to charge to the operating budget.
Can I, Tim, I just ask about that? Is that from last?
It was from last summer. That was sitting out. I can give more details on it.
Yeah, because I thought we were fully, I, we thought fully funded in our regular, like E S Y wasn't paid for off the grant last year. It's in our budget last summer.
Or it was, I can give more details on it.
Yeah.
But it was something on in a way that was a cap that we had to put in the budget. But I'll give more details on that.
Molly, sorry, but that's, so this is the key driver behind the $117,000 increase. Is that what we're saying?
So key drivers, the the boiler and the rooftop.
Okay.
Mostly there was the boiler that were you copying on the bill, which was very reasonable considering the merchants was all in the middle of the night.
Yeah, can we, I don't know that I read through that. Can can we just?
Were you copying on that or was it just us? The bill for the.
It's just us, yeah. What, uh, so what happened? Did it, did it totally die?
No.
Because because you were saying like the week after is when the repair was supposed to happen. And of course, it happens.
Yeah. So it had been identified in the fall in our annual inspection that this was kind of on its last leg. And so we had it, we had ordered the part that we needed. It took like six to eight weeks to come in. And so we had scheduled the repair to happen over February break, knowing we would have to shut the heat off in order to make the repair. So we just kind of missed the window by a week.
But it was just the repair of the expected item and then it did take longer than.
What they ended up doing was a little different than like the original plan back from the inspection once they kind of got into it. So the repair was different than, but it was essentially the same thing. It was the pump.
Got it.
Not the whole big boiler. It was just like the pump line.
Okay. I was just, I was worried that like knowing that it was kind of getting late in the in the timing that maybe when they really started getting in there, they found out there was maybe worse than expected. But it doesn't sound like that was the case. Okay. Okay, great.
And I think the the bill for the entire was $13,000 or something.
It was a $10,000 bill and then for parts I labor came to $6,000 to $1,000.
Yeah, so it was about $13,000.
Okay. But emergency call, working through the night to try and fix it and then a full day afterward?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So the big chart that me and Lyle shared with that, then we also had some changes in related to student need for special education and services. Um, we did update the food service projected loss. Now that we have a lot more data on revenue that's coming in versus costs that's going out. Did anyone have any questions?
So Becky, what you were questioning there is, is it the?
Yeah, we'll just get it. Yeah, we can just get together on what, because I I don't believe I had any part of the E S Y coming out of a grant. So I guess I'd be interested to see what.
And I might have called it the wrong thing on here too. So we'll just, we'll follow up and just see what that what that was. So going forward, I will, now that the vote's happened, that middle box on the right hand side, the amount to be added after June 30th. Now that I know what's passed, next month, you'll see numbers in those boxes. And so, sorry, Cheryl, I probably should have told you how they have it organized here.
Yeah, you know what, though, Molly? I really prefer to unlock the riddle on my own. It's kind of fun to me. So.
So so instead of just coming in with the financial every month, all ups and downs, in the upper left hand corner in that blue shaded box, those are the changes from last month. So when we came here in February, we said that it was going to be $313,000 left remaining expense. The boxes tell you what was added. Um, so now we have $195,000 remaining in expenses. That should match your line by line financial. Then in the bottom by the green, that's some revenue that we have higher than plan. And then in the upper right hand corner, that's, this is exactly how the auditors calculate your fund balance at the end of the year. It's it's a combination of your expenses less than plan and your revenue more than plan to get to the ending fund balance. Then the box below that, I have the current balance of your trust funds. And then the amount to be added will get added now that the vote happened last night. And then in the bottom right hand corner, just so that when you make decisions at year end, this is how much we've been given back in the tax rate the last five or six years. It is kind of all over the map because of COVID, but.
I actually like this. This is more something. Remember, I was a Shakespeare major, okay? I like this.
And so this is just the general fund because the food service fund is coming out of us.
Thank you, Mom.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks, Molly. So Becky, over to you for the principals report.
Um, sure. So, um, I'll do my report first and then we can do the the data for the month was about our lunch program. So I put some numbers on that. So on the principals report, um, writing about positive community culture, I was highlighting our connection with the Kensington Rec Department. And each month, our kindergarten students join our seniors for their coffee talk. And so it's something that each month they'll do projects, they'll sing songs, they'll read books.
read books, they played Little Love Bingo for Valentine's Day recently, so it's just a nice connection that our youngest and oldest residents in town have made, and it's sweet when they call each other their friends. Voting yesterday, there was a board up for anyone interested in becoming pen pals with the kindergarteners, so that they can start having that, like, authentic writing audience, and so they're trying to engage their senior friends to become pen pals now, too. Under meaningful learning, I was highlighting what our fourth graders are doing these days on the Oregon Trail, and they recently did some panning for gold, which was a ton of fun for them. Again, it's just sort of getting them to feel the feels of what it was like to be out there and being out in the elements. It was an absolutely horrible day in the rain, and we made them go out there anyway to pay them for gold, so just trying to get that real. You want the gold, you gotta go get it in the rain. But it was, it was... And then under health and wellbeing, we've had a lot of conversations at school about how we can best help our students' social emotional needs. I think we talked a lot about this since the pandemic over the last few years, and about sort of the changing needs of our students. Prior to the pandemic, we had been an open circle school, and as I've been here for many, many years, Open Circle closed its doors as far as their supports and what they were offering, and right after the pandemic, and so we're at the point where we feel like we need to investigate some of the new social emotional curriculums that are out there. There's a lot of new programs out there in the last few years, and so we've put together a committee of teachers and specialists, and started looking at different programs that are available for students, and trying to see what are the ones that are gonna most align with our goals of, you know, being kind, confident, empathetic, self-driven, and academically competent student, because those are our goals. And so we've just started that process, we're looking to pilot some different lessons at different grade levels and classrooms, and then hopefully be able to make a recommendation of a new curriculum to move forward with, since Open Circle's no longer supporting the schools the way that they were, so.
Is there just a change in their business model, do you think?
I'm not sure, because I actually am hearing rumor that they're reopening, so I'm not exactly sure what the driver was behind them closing, but I feel it's, you know, and maybe we decide to become, to continue to be an open circle school, that's still on the table, because we still have the curriculum. We just felt like we needed to see what other options there were to help our kids, and maybe there's something better out there based on the different kind of needs that we're seeing from our students now. So the hope is, and I listed some of the programs that we're looking at, these are all programs that are being used in other SAU 16 schools, as well as some other surrounding schools, so there isn't one common SEL curriculum that's used in all of the schools, so we're really looking at, you know, what's best for our kids and our towns. The goal would be, hopefully by the end of the school year, you know, take the next couple months to really pilot some lessons in different classrooms, and by the end of the school year, be able to make a recommendation on maybe which one we'd like to move forward with for next year. So there may or may not be a cost associated with that, depending on what we move forward. So for example, the Choose Love curriculum, which, which came from the Sandy Hook tragedy, that's a free curriculum that's available to anybody online, so, you know, should that be our selection, that would not be a cost to our school. Some of the others, there's just a different level of pricing and professional development, but that's all for us to sort of investigate in the next few months.
Are you working on this with a couple of other teachers?
Yeah, so I'm on the committee as well, we're school counselor, Kelsey Eskelin, we've got a couple of primary teachers, a secondary teacher, a special education person, our OT and our speech and language pathologist, and a paraprofessional, so I think we've got a nice mix of people on the committee.
Okay, great.
This one, when I asked for volunteers at the staff meeting, lots of hands went up. So I feel like the teachers are really invested, and, you know, sometimes when you ask for committee volunteers, as you have had your own discussion, sometimes it's hard to get somebody to volunteer, and this one was not heard asked, so we'll have to just, who have their time of their best.
Great.
And then I have some lunch numbers, what I asked Deb to do is run, where, this is, the front is the sales report, and then the, we are like participation rates, as far as like members of kids participating in the lunch program. And I need to be honest, this is not my area of expertise in understanding our lunch program financials. On the front page, the top part is our breakfast numbers, and then the bottom part is our lunch numbers that are highlighted, and it just sort of breaks, so this is from the first day of school through last Friday, so this is a cumulative total of what we've served so far this year. You'll see there's a lot of other lines on there as far as incomes with non-reversible meals, reimbursable meals, and I'm probably not the best person to ask questions about that, but I could do my best. And then the next page is our lunch totals as far as participation rates, so our average daily participation is about 75 students, which is pretty good.
As far as 140, 150?
Yeah, so about 140, 142, 141, I think, if you might subtract preschoolers and stuff. That's for, yeah, for the, for the reimbursable meals, and then you add that to the free meals, and then the reduced meals, so it's like the 75 plus the nine plus the three. I think then that brings you to the 88. So we're looking, yeah, 88. And then the second page is those same numbers for breakfast.
Becky, do you, like, I'm not sure what the reimbursable meals means, like, what?
So in order for it to be like an approved meal from the FDA, it has to have, you know, it has to have the grain and the protein and the veg, and so it has to have certain components that have to be served in order for it to be reimbursable.
Okay.
So we can't just hand them six chicken nuggets and a milk.
Yeah.
So that's not considered a full meal. Even though they just want the six chicken nuggets and a milk?
Yeah.
But that's not considered a full meal.
So would a non-reimbursable meal might, might be like a special occasion type? Like, I guess we're just trying to think about with that. On the second page over on the right, non-reimbursable meals.
That's a great question, I would have to ask Deb, non-reimbursable meal. That could be a staff meal as well, perhaps.
It could be a staff meal, but also I think if a child gets a second meal, then I don't think it's reimbursable.
Okay.
I think.
They'll double check.
The staff meals are definitely not reimbursable.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't even know if kids can go at a place, but I think if they get a second meal, it's not, it's not a two-for-a-lunch.
Like, I'll double check with Deb what, what the definition of a non-reimbursable meal is.
I know that if they order a yogurt plate or something like that, they don't get the like vegetables and stuff that come with the other meal usually, I think. So maybe it's when you order the thing that's not regular lunch, best guess.
Oh, okay.
It's a good question, I will ask for you. Comparatively to last year, our participation rate has not gone down, so it's, I know there was a, you know, we're accounting for the food loss, which we know, which we expected, but it's not due to lower participation rates.
Do we feel like that, do we feel like that price increase is helping us out in terms of financials from where we were last year?
I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely helping. Whether it could be higher, I don't know what that sweet spot is before kids go.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, it's just easier, it's just...
I mean, there are some days on the more popular, you know, pizza and breakfast for lunch kind of day, whatever, where she's serving 120 meals. I mean, there are some days where participation is 90%.
Yeah, okay. I believe, Molly, when we did that cost analysis for another district, it was 82% of participation rate to break even every day.
I'd have to go...
It was over 80% to be able to break even, that's why, small schools and school lunch.
And I think we did that, we did that a long time ago, before going to the grocery store got super expensive, it was probably high.
If you just let us give them hot dogs, brownies, chocolate milk, strawberry milk, the way it used to be, everybody would get lunch. I know, gotta get yogurt, fruit.
Um, Deb also did want me to share that she has written or put in for a grant to get a milk cooler back at school, because right now we don't have a milk cooler here because of our, the quantity of milk in which we order doesn't warrant them giving us the cooler, so it's tricky, and we don't have a ton of use to store the milk, so she put in for a grant to try to get a milk cooler back here.
Okay, great. Thanks for that info, Becky. Uh, any new business?
Any new business?
Old business?
Nope.
People-related matters?
No.
Personnel?
Nope.
Okay. So then I'll close the meeting at 7:02, I'll make a motion to close the meeting at 7:02. A second?
Second.
Okay, one favor?
Thank you, Molly.